Special session of the Trophy Club Town Council will come to order. It is 8:51 a.m. We do have a quorum. Councilmember Schaffner and Councilmember Garrett are absent this morning. I mean Reed, what did I say?
Garrett.
Garrett, okay, yeah. Item number one, consider to take appropriate action regarding an order to approve and authorizing the issuance of sale of the Trophy Club Public Improvement District Number One Special Assessment Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2015, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 26,155, 26,155,000, approving and authorizing an indenture of trust, a bond purchase contract, an official statement, a continuing disclosure agreement, an escrow agreement, a bond council engagement letter, and a financial advisory services agreement, and other agreements and documents in connection therewith making findings with respect to the issuance of such bonds and providing an effective date. Stephen, do you want to start?
Sure.
Some information, and then we'll go from there.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this has been a long process that we've been working towards to explore the opportunity to refund the 2007 PID bonds. The market conditions have indicated that a refunding would be a, at least an opportunity for us to explore. Several months ago, you gave us the authorization to move forward with that. Since that time, we've been working with Mark McLeaney, who's the town's financial advisor, as well as Julie Partain, the town's bond counsel, to examine the possibilities and what is the best, the best means and method to achieve a refunding that would measure some appreciable and substantial savings to our PID residents. Since that time, we've been, we've engaged our underwriters, we've been doing our research, and we've been communicating with the rating agency Standard and Poor's. One of the things that is significant is that the bonds that we did were the first municipally bonded PID in Texas, and we are going to be the first refunding of a PID bond in Texas. And additionally, that bond was a non-investment grade, and we are seeking investment grade, which has never been done before in Texas. So, we're kind of, we blazed new trails in 2007, and we continue to do so now. One of the things that we wanted to make sure is that we had at least a minimum of $10 million of savings to move forward with this. We think at this time, a conservative estimate is about 12 million. But we still have a couple of hurdles left. The most significant being Standard and Poor's. They have some criteria that they're very strict upon related to values and the liens that are placed on those. And so, we've worked with the Denton Appraisal District, and they've been very good to work with. Can't give them enough credit for their assistance because they've taken some of the, some of the lots that have changed since January 1st on the tax roll of 2015, and they have looked at those specifically and where they stand today. Some of those have become inhabited, some of those have been built, but they're not finished yet. And so, what that's allowed us to do is the, the risk is diminished because those homes are coming forward. And the question now remains is whether Standard and Poor's will accept that criteria, or do they want an official January 1, 2016 roll? If that's the case, we will have a decision to make about whether or not we want to wait until next calendar year to sell these bonds, which has an impact to the bonds that we have planned to sell for CIP projects, including the town hall, because we would have to sell those at non-bank qualified, which would add about $400,000 in interest over 20 years. Or do we wait until 2017, which we don't know what the market will do then and what interest rates would be? And that would also probably have an impact on our capital projects at that point, too. So, we would have a little more flexibility to adjust in 2017, but we don't know what rates will be, and that's the big question. So, we have some, we're hopeful that S&amp;P will work with us and that they will see our side, because if that's the case, we've exceeded their criteria. But we won't know that until our call with them here in a couple of weeks. We have, Mark McLeaney is here to answer any specific questions and provide additional details. Appreciate the opportunity to work on this project, and both Julie and Mark have been outstanding, and Stephen Glickman also has done great work.
So, when the, when the PID bonds were initially sold, it was at seven something percent interest, is it 7.75?
7.75 percent.
And the interest we're looking for is 4.25 or something like that?
That's correct.
And that's where the savings comes from? Is that, is that conservative 12 million after all fees?
Yes.
I'm actually going to give you more update.
Okay.
That I did on, I mean, on the 20th.
Okay.
That Stephen is not aware of.
All right, you can go ahead, Mark.
And this handout is the full number run I wouldn't normally give to you all, but this is as complicated of a transaction that we can do here in Texas. Stephen did a great job of going through the pluses and the minuses of decisions we're going to need to make. We are pushing very hard to get it done this calendar year so not to affect the city as a whole. Standard and Poor's, three categories or three criteria that they're hitting us with. One, the total value of the PID has to be the loan to value, the, all the loans, including the school districts, the county, and the city, that a taxpayer is paying within the PID has to be below, I'm sorry, has to be greater than seven to one to be investment grade. We're at 9.22 to one. So, that's the first criteria. We meet that off of the current values, January 1, 2015. They also say we have to beat, if we take every parcel below five to one and assume we never make a penny from it, that those landowners walk away. And we never can either sell it, we, the PID administrator, sell it in foreclosure, someone else take over, we never make a penny from those. For 20 years, do we have enough money in the reserve funds to meet the bond obligation? Well, the most you've ever been delinquent over a year, you being the PID, is $1,600. So, this is a ridiculous requirement, but that's their criteria. We fail that test using January 1, 2015 values. We said, this is not January 1st. We are so different. Well, Stephen Glickman did a great job working with Denton County, got Denton County to review properties that exchanged hands. There's a lot of properties that have exchanged hands that had, on January 1st, either partially built, not even built, now were started, and people moving in. They are reviewing that with their criteria committee. We were trying to get them to do new sales, sales values, because that's even be more accurate. They said, nope, it has to come from the appraisal district. So, when you do that, we lose many of those that were five to one, many of those that were five to one or below are pushing 10 to one. So, half of them move out, or a third of them move out of that category, and now we make it 20 years. So, the bonds can be made. That's going to be the criteria committee's ability to, they're going to have to say, yes, we accept that, or no, our criteria is January 1st. We're going to have to wait until we get new values from the entire PID, not just the new, the ones that exchanged hands. That is completely out of our hands. Once we get that, and we'll know sometime very early December, then we can move forward. Without that, without that investment grade rating, we cannot get bond insurance, and this is going to sell very, very well with bond insurance. The bond insurers will not insure anything that doesn't have an investment grade. So, then we're stuck having to wade into 2016 till the appraisal district comes up with new values. The handout I have here, I'll go through several pages. Mayor, your first question, do the costs, do the savings come after the cost? Yes. The savings that Stephen talked about, that I'm going to talk about, that are even greater, are after all costs. This first page are the bonds that are outstanding. There's 26,155,000 currently outstanding. You can see the interest rate, seven and three quarters. In 2007, we were lucky to get seven and three quarters. It sounds crazy now, but we were lucky at that time, because it was absolutely just dirt. No one knew what was going to happen, no one knew about, you know, the, how tough economic times would come. Well, this project has been, from a developer standpoint, from the city's standpoint, you know, really a bonanza. Page two are where we see right now the sources and uses. We cannot, after the fact, have more bonds outstanding than we do beforehand. 26,155, because that's what the assessment is based off of. So, we have to sell these bonds at a premium. And if you look at that, we, right now, we're not meeting that test. We're at 26,410. That's just going to be a matter of raising the interest rate and getting a more premium. But we have to generate about four and a half million dollars of premium to the par amount, because we're going to need approximately 30 million, 31 million, to pay off all the bonds, all the interest, plus all the cost of issuance. So, you're going to have more bonds, we need more sources to cover all of the interest on these bonds for the next few years. You look down, we're going to contribute your existing reserve fund, you're going to contribute what's in the existing administration fund. Now, we're going to recreate those, but these bonds are going away, so you put all the funds into a big pot, and then we divide those funds up. We're going to recreate the uses, 250,000 is the prepayment delinquent fund, an administrative fund, and then a bond reserve fund of 2,150,000. Again, we have to have enough money in that bond reserve to, in the event we never get a payment from anything below five to one, that they draw on that bond reserve fund for the life of the bonds, and all the bond payments get paid. Refunding escrow, 29,805,000. That's what we have to put into the escrow to cover all the outstanding obligations, even though you only have 26,155,000 of par amount of bonds. So, you can see, there's a lot of money that needs to go there. We've estimated the cost of issuance at 525. We've estimated the underwriters discount, that's what the underwriters, who purchase these bonds and then resell them, would make. We've estimated bond insurance at roughly 425,000, and of course, then there's a rounding to make everything sources and uses equal. If you look on page three, we're looking at interest rates, and this is different than yields in the four and a quarter that we're talking about, of five to five and a half percent. That, whenever you have a interest rate higher than the yield, you, the purchaser pays a premium. You see the yield ranging from .8 to about three and a half percent. That's what the investor would get. Second column from the right is the premium that's generated based off those coupons and yields to the investor. And that's where we end up with 26,155 of par amount of bonds, plus the extra premium that's generated. The new debt service schedule presumably would be page five and six, and this is the big number difference in what Stephen had shown you on page seven. The second column on the left, prior debt service, that's the existing annual debt service on the existing bonds that are at seven and three quarters percent. Total's up to 57 million dollars. The refunding debt service, the structure where we're looking at is saving basically a minimum of $50,000 a year and shortening this and getting rid of the PID completely. Generates, the 12 million is where we were previously, we're looking at roughly 15 million dollars worth of savings. Now, the Attorney General makes us present value that back to today's dollars, and it ends up being about 8,500,000 net after all costs. The last page is a quick summary page. All of this, in theory, is going to happen before the end of this year. The second paragraph, the true interest cost and the net interest cost. True interest cost takes into account the premiums, and the net interest cost is, takes into account both the premium and the coupons. So, the 424 is roughly where we think we're going to come in. The average coupon, you can see, is roughly five and a half percent. That's what generates all of the premium. But you get down to the last couple of lines, net present value savings, 8.2 million dollars. Percent savings of refunded bonds, so you're taking what is refunded and comparing it to your savings, is 31 percent. We target refundings when they're greater than 5 percent. So, this is huge, huge number. And it also gets rid of the PID approximately five years early, and it's just gone and just part of the city and would no longer even be here. Some of the things that we visited with, with staff, is make sure we get savings each year. So, make sure that we can shorten it without, because we could possibly shorten it another year and take out all the savings, but we want everybody to get savings each year. We don't know where we will be interest rate-wise when we actually sell these. There's too many caveats. We don't know what investment grade rating, we don't know if we're going to get an investment grade rating. What the resolution, I'm sorry, the ordinance allows us to do is to move forward with your all's permission, if you pass this, if we can get to 10 million dollars worth of savings. If we cannot get to 10 million dollars worth of savings, we cannot move forward. So, because of the timing that we're stuck with, we're rushing to get this done and closed. Bank qualified, and Stephen did a good job of explaining it, if a town sells less than 10 million dollars in a calendar year, you are selling bonds bank qualified. That will save you roughly 40 basis points on a 20-year loan. Banks can buy those bonds where they cannot buy City of Dallas bonds. So, the extra banks buying it drives down the interest rate by about 40 basis points. If we cannot finish this year, and it has to be closed, then we have to come back to you all and say, okay, here's decisions to make. We now get new appraised values, we get the investment grade, do we sell these bonds in 2016 that will cost the city as a whole a little bit more money, roughly 400,000 over 20 years? But we generate roughly 15 million for a great portion of the city. I hope we don't come to that decision. I hope Standard and Poor's will understand that the values they've given us from the appraisal district, that they've gotten from the appraisal district, meets all their criteria, but we can't control them. What we're looking for today is to get permission to move forward if we can get it done and get the savings of 10 million dollars. If we can't get it done this calendar year, we want to come back to you all for future decisions. Because it's not, this needs to be done this year, and that's really what the approval, although the approval says it's for six months going forward, I'd want to come back and visit with you once we get new appraised values and, and give you all that information. So, that's a lot of information in a short time. The, the write-up that staff put together was a good summary, included a, a little bit of a write-up from us. Julie Partain has done an unbelievably good job working with the Attorney General. They've given us permission to proceed. We didn't know if they would give us permission to proceed. They said, there's nothing in here that shows up a roadblock for them. Since this is the first time we're doing something like this in Texas, the AG really was going to put a fine-tooth comb on all of these legal documents, and her work has been really exceptional and has got us over that hump. Because if the AG came back and said, nope, we're not ready to approve this, we're into next year anyway. So, work that's been done by your staff and, and Julie has been terrific. Now, it's up to us, and I say us, our, our rating call that we're going to have in a couple of weeks, and the criteria that Standard and Poor's has, will they bend that criteria? We just don't know. They've given us indications that they will, so we're looking for permission to proceed. If we do this, we're likely going to price on the 14th of December and rush a close. Typically, it takes 30 days to get a closing done with the Attorney General, and rush a close so that it closes prior to the 30th. Lots of unanswered questions that we can't control, but we're trying to be in a position to move forward without having to call town council together and say, you know, we got it, can we go? So, that's a lot of information. I'm happy to go into any more, into more detail or answer questions.
All right, thank you. Council, anyone have any questions of Mark?
Just a quick clarification, you mentioned that you guys were going to move forward if you could get 10 million in savings. Is that the raw number, not the?
That, that would be the raw number, yes, sir.
Thanks.
And that's a big difference than, by the way, what I'm showing here, but there's just so, if, if the, a good example is, where's, where could something be wrong? That insurance quote, a 500, roughly 425,000. Knowing the credit, that's high. But the insurance companies, fortunately, there's three of them, are going to use the uncertainty of a new market in Texas. They, they have all insured land deals similar to this in Florida and California. But they're going to use the newness to probably, you know, hit a premium that's going to make their year. I could see that number coming in twice of that. Well, that's, if it comes in twice that over a 20-year period, we're going to end up, you know, being 750,000 or a million dollars of the savings gone. But the savings number is so high, that 30 percent is such a great number, and with the Fed thinking that they're going to start raising interest rates, a year from now, we're likely to be less savings than we are right now. We don't know that for a fact. I don't, you know, if my crystal ball was that good, I would say, let's wait, or we got to move. I don't know where rates will be a year from now, but that's, that's a number that my numbers are not reflecting, and there is uncertainty, because there hasn't been an insurance company coming in here to insure any products like this.
Was, wasn't there insurance on the original PID bond?
No, sir. It was non-rated, non-investment grade. That's why it was such a, you know, such a high interest rate. And, and obviously, no development out there. One taxpayer paying the total assessment until he got parcels sold.
Right, okay. So, other than S&amp;P rejecting the five to one ratio numbers that we present and not approving it by the end of the year, there's no real downside to moving forward and at least attempting to get approval?
Uh, sir, there is, in, in my opinion, I don't think there's any downside, because if we don't proceed, the PID is staying, paying the exact same amount for the next 18, well, until 2037. There, there's, there's no way we're going to come back with them with a higher PID assessment. The downside is that we've gone to work, your staff's put in a lot of time, Julie Partain's put in a lot of time, that's your downside.
Right.
But the upside is so great, though, it's, it's been worth us pushing all of this.
All right, thank you.
I just got a, maybe a couple of political questions, because it frustrates me every, every so often when somebody says, oh, you live in the PID. On one of the wherethes, it says, in the best interest of the citizens of the town. Now, I think I have my beliefs of why, I think it benefits everybody, but would you just go on the record and say, why, it benefits the entire town?
Well, one of the, well, I mean, there'd be several, and I can't get into, you know, the politics, but a citizen in the PID is part of the town. So, if one citizen benefits in your, your town, the town is better off. That's, you know, one perspective. I look at this, and one of the things that we visited with, with your staff, is we're getting, if we can get this done, we're getting the PID to be closed down and 100 percent part of the city in 2033 versus 2037. Now, there's no longer a PID in a town, there's just a town. I think that's a huge benefit. That's, you know, someone else may say, that's not a benefit. So, those are the two things. Anytime you benefit someone in the town, the town's greater as a whole. So, the monetary process each PID resident will get is a benefit, so everybody in the town benefits. But in my opinion, the greatest thing is this thing goes away earlier than, than planned. And then there's not a, well, that's the PID and not really part of the town, or vice versa. It is all part of the town. And I'm sure that other people come up with a lot of other reasons, but those are the two things that, that I think.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Greg?
Okay.
All right. I would move the approval of ordinance 2015-42, authorizing the issuance and sale of Trophy Club Public Improvement District Number One Special Revenue, Special Assessment Revenue Refunding Bonds not to exceed 26,155,000.
I'll second that.
All right, move by Mayor Sanders, seconded by Councilmember Parrow. As discussion, I appreciate the question, Greg, about where's the benefit to everyone? The direct benefit, of course, is to PID residents who will pay less in their assessments. If we do this, and it does sell by the end of December, it really won't affect what a PID resident pays in their assessment for another year?
The assessment already went out, yes, sir.
Yeah.
That assessment went out with the tax bills.
So, it'll take another year for that to happen.
Correct. We're going to structure it this year that the planned payment is the same, the future payment after the refunding is the same total payment that they would have made this year anyway.
Okay.
The savings will kick in in 2017, calendar year.
That's what I thought, all right. And, and so, and, and as far as the number of citizens, a year from now, if there were 1,400 homes occupied at 2. something people per home, that's a third of our residents? Something like that, maybe, maybe more in the sense of if there really are more than 2.5 people per household. It seems to be, because there are lots of kids, so. So, I think it, it's a good thing, and I agree with Mark's comment that says, the sooner we can get out from having something to worry about and administer, the better off we are ultimately. I think it probably produces some challenges in the sense of how do we transition some aspects that have been directly tied to PID and town, but, but I still think it's an overall good thing to do. And even though it might cost us 400,000 to 500,000 in interest on future-year CIP projects, including Newtown Hall, I think that's a fairly small amount in comparison to what the savings is for a large number of citizens. So, I'm in favor, and that's the reason I wanted to make the motion. Anybody else want to make a comment?
Borrowed money on behalf of a lot of people, and you're getting, trying to lower the interest rate, it seems like a no-brainer to me.
It does to me, too.
I mean, in plain speaking terms, so refinance to lower your payment. Everybody likes that.
Anybody else?
Adds evaluations, too.
All right. All in favor of approving ordinance 2015-42? Show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous based on the people that are here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for meeting this morning. Again, this has been a rush. We tried to get ready for, at a previous meeting, we didn't have the Attorney General signed off on it. Julie, I wish she was here. She's done a great job. Your staff has done a great job working with Denton County, the appraisal district. Stephen Glickman went straight to them, gave them data, they came back with stuff that gives us legs to stand on. Whether they bend their criteria is their decision, but we're at least positioned to take advantage of it if we do. So, thank you all very much.
Appreciate, Mark, all the efforts you've made, and everyone else, Julie, who's not here, and staff.
Thank you.
And everybody did a great job trying to pull this off in a relatively small amount of time, but we knew our deadline. All right. All right, item number two. All right, item number two, pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Open Meeting Act, the council will convene into closed executive session to discuss the following. Texas Government Code, Section 551, 0712, consultation with attorney in order to consult with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflict with the Open Meetings Act. A, legal advice regarding zoning, comprehensive plan, platting, and other town development and code regulations. It is 922, and we are going to executive session. So, we'll reconvene into regular session, we have completed our executive session. Item, just put my paper away. Item three, consider to take appropriate action regarding the executive session. We do not have any business for executive session. We will then move to adjournment. If there's no objection, we will adjourn the meeting at 10:40. We are adjourned.